Good evening, everyone. It being 7:30 on Tuesday, July 12, 2022. Let's begin our town council meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please have a moment of silence for all those serving in our military at home and abroad and for their families. Thank you. Welcome, everyone, and we will begin our meeting this evening with a roll call vote. Please, Clerk Simino. Here.
Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Hume is not present. Counselor Mackin. Counselor Maglio.
Here.
Counselor O'Brien. Counselor Reynolds.
Here.
Counselor Ringus.
Here.
Counselor Ryan.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We do have a council member who is participating remotely this evening, so we will be doing all our votes by roll call tonight. All right, so moving on, let's start with announcements. Counselor Reynolds, I believe you have an announcement about Penniman Park.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, it's just a reminder to all the residents of Braintree that we have the Master Plan Steering Committee underway, and we've just started, excuse me, Phase Two of that process. That's public outreach and collecting data. That is the opinions of the residents of Braintree. We have questionnaires that are on the website, the Master Braintree Master Plan website, and we ask that all residents, we encourage you, your family, your friends, to fill out those in order to give us a better idea in the Master Steering Committee as a whole as we guide down the road for the new master plan for 2023. So that would be my part of the announcement, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Counselor Flaherty would also like to, as the other member.
Go right ahead. So my part of the announcement tonight is to let people know that the Master Plan Steering Committee invites residents to participate in the process over the course of the summer by hosting what's called a "meeting in a box." These materials are available for you online. If you go to the town website and find the Master Plan Steering Committee portion of the town website, on that site there's a link to our master plan website, and there you can find materials for "meeting in a box." We encourage you to host these. All it takes is one brave person to host them, and then those people understand what it's meant to be, and they go out and host them. In that way, we sort of build exponentially on the participation in this program, which is really the whole point of what we're doing. But the other thing that I want to share with you is that we have, we are about to conclude the first phase of the program. So there's four phases, and the first one is called "existing conditions." And in this phase, the consultants have gone through a series of activities, some of them just for themselves to understand the lay of the land, and some of them, many of them involving the public at different points, to try and understand the geography of Braintree, our institutions, and attitudes of residents concerning the strengths and also the struggles of Braintree. And so the consultants have produced a draft. This is a 200-page-long document, which the Steering Committee has gone through, and the consultants provided us with about an hour-long presentation. And there is a PowerPoint or a slide deck that is available also online on the same master plan website. I encourage you to take a look at that slide deck because it presents you with a whole bunch of information about our town, and it's very current. Their review was very comprehensive, and so I found the information to be sometimes surprising and sometimes entirely what I expected, but it was interesting. And what I'm going to share with you is like, just a quick, it's like a summary of a summary of an enormous document. So, you know, I do encourage you to go and look at it yourself, and you can watch the whole presentation on B-CAM if you wish, or it's available for you on YouTube. But there are, there are eight, seven categories, and the first of these is population and land use. And so what they wanted to convey to us in that is that our population is growing moderately, and we're also becoming more diverse, and we've done a good job so far of preserving open space from development. So over 22% of land in Braintree is protected as open space. But they also noted that our housing prices are very steep, which will come as a surprise to exactly no one. And in fact, many longtime residents in Braintree would not be able to afford the home that they live in if they were in the market for it now. So that's kind of a problem that they highlighted for us. And then in the area of economic development, what everybody already knows about Braintree is that our location gives us lots of advantages where economic development is concerned, and there's really strong support in Braintree for our small business community. And there's a strong drive to protect and promote our small businesses. But as far as large-scale business development is concerned, this will need to be mostly adaptive reuse or redevelopment because there's just not a lot of developable, developable, developable space in Braintree. The next category is historic preservation and cultural resources. Braintree residents, no surprise to me, place a very high value on our rich history, but many of our historic properties haven't been properly inventoried. And cultural resources are also valued, but there are opportunities there to enhance the communities built around the arts in Braintree. As far as open space and recreation are concerned, with 22% of Braintree protected as open space, we're off to a really good start in that department, but Braintree residents expressed a wish for more playgrounds, improvements to existing parks and athletic fields, and there's also an opportunity to open more of the inadequate river up for passive recreation. And then you come to traffic, which lots of people had lots of things to say about. But what they focused their comments on is volume, cost, and safety. So most people, it was a surprise to me to learn this, most people who work in Braintree live outside of Braintree. And we're an area where there is more driving and less walking, and for some families that creates a burden of transportation costs. It also creates a certain, some safety problems, and if you look at a map of crashes in Braintree, you'll just see that the blue dots that represent each crash just line all of the major arteries throughout Braintree. But there are some noted safety areas that need improvement, specifically Pearl and Ivory Street, Five Corners, and the area around the 93 Granite Street overpass. So, and then we get to public facilities and services, where no big surprise, it was, became clear quickly that our public buildings are old, and they are in need of repair and replacement or modernization. And there's a fairly high number of positions in our departments that need to be filled because there was a hiring freeze during COVID, and that is starting to catch up with us as far as being able to provide services is concerned. The last category is sustainability and resilience. Braintree is starting to see effects of higher temperatures, sea level rise, and increased flooding, and certain areas of Braintree have begun to experience something called the urban heat island effect, which is when, is an area where the ratio of roadways and rooftops to green space is off balance, so that the radiant heat from the roadways and rooftops isn't able to be absorbed by the surrounding green areas, and so that actually increases the air temperature in those locations and exacerbates the climate problems that we're generally seeing. So there was some encouragement that we come up with ways to sort of balance those issues out. That is an incredibly short presentation on what was a short presentation of a long document. So, you know, I think a great deal of work is being done on this, and I invite residents to take advantage of the information that's available to them because it is, there's a lot of it, and it's not that hard to understand, and it's a result of what residents told us. So there's, that's that.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Counselor Flaherty, and thank you, Counselor Reynolds, both of you, for serving on the Master Plan Steering Committee and for all of your work. It's an extra committee, and I am grateful, and I think I speak on behalf of my colleagues and the residents, for your participation in that important work. So thank you, and thank you for the summary of the summary as well. Counselor Reynolds, did you have another announcement? Okay, go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to bring attention, there will be a Penniman Park Neighborhood Association meeting tomorrow evening at Penniman Park at 7:00 PM. Neighbors are invited. That will be, John Fabiano has graciously stepped up and has organized a conversation. There has been previous conversations that have occurred already. However, the momentum is there for the neighborhood to talk about the use of Penniman Park and also some of the speeding and traffic safety concerns along Cleveland Avenue and in the cut-throughs of those neighborhood side streets.
Excellent.
So again, 7:00 PM, Penniman Park tomorrow evening.
Thank you, Counselor Reynolds. Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to say that on June 25, the town of Braintree, we celebrated the Fourth of July, and I wanted to congratulate Braintree's Fourth of July Committee for another outstanding day. It started off with the parade through town, and I joined several of my counselors, and we walked the parade route, and we gave out candy to everyone, and we almost didn't run out of candy before the end of the parade route, but we did run out, but we did a little, we lasted a little longer, so it's just so much fun. One day, I hope I'm going to be able to sit there and watch the parade because it's hard to get the perspective on the whole parade when you're marching in it, but it was, it was excellent. It seemed like everybody had a great time. And then I went up to the high school, and they had a wonderful band playing, a band from Philadelphia. I forget the name of the band, but they were...
The Mamas?
Okay. And they, they were playing Motown songs, and if you closed your eyes, you would have thought that it was the record playing. They were so, they were awesome. They were wonderful. And then the fireworks, you can't beat the Braintree fireworks. They're just so, you're right there, they're right above you, and they were spectacular. And it was such a great night for fireworks. The sky was nice and clear, and it was a wonderful night and a wonderful day for the town of Braintree to celebrate the Fourth of July, and it really signals the start of summer because we do celebrate the week before. And I just wanted to say congratulations to the Braintree Fourth of July Committee for doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ryan. All right. Any other announcements from councilors? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. We have no approval of minutes this evening. I do want to recognize our town staff who have joined us tonight. Put my glasses on so I can see. Director Jim Arson from our DPW and our Assistant Town Clerk Deb Starr, thank you for being here with us this evening. So with that, I think we will move on to our first matter, which is 22035. Town clerk, call to the state primary election or take up any action relative thereto. So this is required to be submitted by the town clerk and voted by the town council for, again, for the call of the state primary elections, which will be held on Tuesday, September 6. Clerk Casey provided all of these materials to us during the last meeting we had, so this is really a pro forma matter. So are there any questions or comments from the council? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion for Order 22035?
The motion is upon the request of the town clerk, the town of Braintree, through the Braintree Town Council. It is so ordered, the call of the state primary election, September 6, 2022. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the town of Braintree is hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town who are qualified to vote in the state primary election on Tuesday, September 6, 2022, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, to vote at the Voting Center polling in their respective precincts, to cast their votes for the following purposes, to cast their votes in the state primary for the candidates of political parties for the following offices, representatives in Congress for the 8th District, Governor of the Commonwealth, Lieutenant Governor for the Commonwealth, Attorney General for the Commonwealth, Secretary of State for the Commonwealth, Treasurer and Receiver General for the Commonwealth, Auditor for the Commonwealth, Counselor for the 2nd and 4th District, Senator in the General Court for the Norfolk and Plymouth District, and the Norfolk, Bristol and Plymouth District, Representative in the General Court for the 5th Norfolk District, District Attorney for the Norfolk District, Sheriff for Norfolk County. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, councilors Ryan and Ringus. Clerk Simino, roll call vote, please.
Counselor Erika.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Hume is not present. Counselor Mackin. Counselor Maglio.
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien.
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds.
Aye.
Counselor Ringus.
Aye.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
It's eight in favor, one absent.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to 22036. Town clerk, early voting or take up any action relative thereto. Similarly, this was also, this is also required to be submitted by the town clerk and voted by the town council for early voting to be held prior to the state primary election. As you can see, and again, Clerk Casey provided us these materials at our last meeting to review, but for residents, there will be a full week of early voting. It will be occurring here at Town Hall. This will also include Saturday, a Sunday, and an evening option, so lots of opportunities. Please exercise your right to vote, and you can come early or you can vote at the regular polling locations. So again, any councilors have any questions or comments on the early voting? Okay, with that, is there a motion for 22035?
Yeah, the motion is upon the request of the town clerk, the town of Braintree, through the Braintree Town Council. It is so ordered. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the town of Braintree is hereby required to establish under Chapter 92 of the Acts of 2022, an early voting site to allow any qualified voter as defined in Section 1 of Chapter 51 to cast a ballot for any biennial state election during the early voting period at the recommendation of the Braintree Board of Registars, and the Braintree Town Council hereby designates Braintree Town Hall Cahill Auditorium as Braintree's early voting site. Further, early voting hours shall be held during the days and hours described below. I'm going to say the day of the week, the date, when it's open, when it's closed. Saturday, August 27, 2022, open at 8:30 AM, closed at 12:30 PM. Sunday, August 28, 2022, open at 8:30 AM, closed at 12:30 PM. Monday, August 29, 2022, open at 8:30 AM, closed at 4:30 PM. Tuesday, August 20, August 30, 2022, open at 8:30 AM, closed at 7:00 PM. Wednesday, August 31, 2022, open at 8:30 AM, closed at 4:30 PM. Thursday, September 1, 2022, open at 8:30 AM, closed at 4:30 PM. Friday, September 2, open at 8:30 AM, closed at 1:00 PM. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, councilors Ryan and Ringus. Clerk Simino, roll call vote, please.
Counselor Erika.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty.
Aye.
Counselor Hume is not in attendance. Counselor Mackin.
Aye.
Counselor Maglio.
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien.
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds.
Aye.
Counselor Ringus.
Aye.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Eight in favor, one absent.
Thank you very much. All right, moving right along. We are now going to move on to the public hearing section of our agenda. So I just want to explain, there are very specific guidelines for the timing to opening public hearings. We have three public hearings this evening that we will need to open, and then we are going to continue them tonight without discussion, and that is because all three of them before us this evening are still making their way through the committee process. So the inclusionary housing zoning amendment is still with the planning board, and the other two proposals, the tree protection ordinance and the zoning amendment for non-medical marijuana, those are both working their way through the ordinance and rules committee. And I would like to thank those committee members for their diligence, the effort and time they are putting into all the matters before them, led by Chairman Ringus. So for the first two orders, I'd ask for a motion to open and continue to September 20, 2022, at 7:30 PM, and we will take Order 22012 and 22037 in one vote unless any counselor objects, and that is for the tree protection and the inclusionary zoning to September 20. Okay, hearing none. In that case, do I have a motion to open the public hearing for the following two orders? 22012, mayor, sorry, zoning bylaw text amendment, inclusionary housing and associated revisions or take up any action relative thereto, and 22037, council president, tree protection ordinance or take up any action relative thereto.
Motion to open the public hearing for Order 22012 and Order 22037.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, councilors Ryan and Ringus. Clerk Simino, roll call vote, please.
Counselor Erika.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty.
Aye.
Counselor Hume is not present. Counselor Mackin.
Aye.
Counselor Maglio.
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien.
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds.
Aye.
Counselor Ringus.
Aye.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Eight in favor, one absent.
Thank you very much. And now is there a motion to continue the public hearing to September 20, 2022, at 7:30 PM for the following two orders? 22012, mayor, zoning bylaw text amendment, inclusionary housing and associated revisions or take up any action relative thereto, and 22037, council president, tree protection ordinance or take up any action relative thereto.
Motion to continue the public hearing for Order 22012 and Order 22037 to September 20, 2022, at 7:30 PM.
Second.
Thank you, councilors Ryan and Ringus. Clerk Simino, roll call vote, please.
Counselor Erika.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Hume is not present. Counselor Mackin.
Aye.
Counselor Maglio.
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien.
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds.
Aye.
Counselor Ringus.
Aye.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Eight in favor, one absent.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to our next one. It's 22015, citizen petition, zoning ordinance text amendments, proposed amendment article 18 XVIIII, medical and adult use or non-medical marijuana establishments and related amendments to Section 135-601 and 135-806, or take up any action relative thereto. So the next town council, this will be to open and then continue to August 2, 2022, at 7:30 PM. Do we have a motion?
Motion to open the public hearing for Order 22015.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, councilors Ryan and Ringus. Clerk Simino, roll call vote, please.
Counselor Erika.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Hume is absent. Counselor Mackin.
Aye.
Counselor Maglio.
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien.
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds.
Aye.
Counselor Ringus.
Aye.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Eight in favor, one absent.
Thank you very much. And now is there a motion to continue the public hearing to August 2, 2022, at 7:30 PM for Order 22015?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk Simino, roll call vote, please.
Counselor Erika.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty.
Aye.
Counselor Hume is not present. Counselor Mackin.
Aye.
Counselor Maglio.
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien.
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds.
Aye.
Counselor Ringus.
Aye.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Eight in favor, one absent.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you, everyone, for bearing with us of the procedural matters. Moving right along, 22033, National Grid petition for Stonewood Lane or take up any action relative thereto. I will turn it over to my colleague, Counselor Ryan, the Chairman of the Committee on the Department of Public Works, for a recommendation.
Thank you, Madam President. Earlier this evening, the Department of Public Works Subcommittee met and has a unanimous favorable recommendation to the full council for 22033 National Grid petition, Stonewood Lane, or take up any action related thereto. So National Grid wants to relay approximately, I'm going to make it as a motion and kind of tell the story as I make the motion. So the motion is to, for National Grid to relay approximately 540 feet of 2-inch bare steel from 1941 with approximately 540 feet of 2-inch plastic in Stonewood Lane from Birchcroft Road to the end of Main at House Number 11. Also relay approximately 130 feet of 2-inch plastic from 1972 and 80 feet of 2-inch bare steel from 1941 with approximately 210 feet of 2-inch plastic in Birchwood Road from the existing plastic to the end of Main at House Number 59 with staff recommendations. Belt has no conflicts with this location. The Department of Public Works has reviewed the subject petition and the accompanying plans for the gas main replacement on Stonewood Lane and Birchcroft Road. The work is being proposed as part of a program to eliminate bare steel gas infrastructure. Both Stonewood Lane and Birchcroft Road are subject to the 10-year moratorium for longitudinal trenching, have both been resurfaced by overlay and micro-surface, surfacing in 2017, and as such, the DPW recommends that the petition be approved, if it is so granted, containing the following conditions. A temporary patch shall be placed immediately after the work. The street excavation should be saw cut, backfilled, and compacted in 8-inch lifts, paved to match existing asphalt depth with a minimum depth of 4 inches, and 2-inch lifts to maintain the existing street grade. After maintaining the temporary patch through one winter, National Grid must return the following spring to perform a curb-to-curb mill and overlay on all disturbed roadway segments. We also recommend that the following requirements be added to the permit if it is to be granted. National Grid must arrange a pre-construction meeting with the Braintree DPW to discuss utility corridor assignments. The new gas mains must not encroach on any existing utilities, and in the standard language with National Grid or its contractors, can't close a street without permission from the town. So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you, council, go ahead, Counselor Ryan.
Thank you. So National Grid is doing this work on these streets. They were done over in 2017. Our DPW staff met with National Grid and explained to them, if you are going to do this street or if you're going to do the work in this roadway where we resurfaced the road in 2017, you're going to put it back to the condition it's in now, curb-to-curb, from one side of the street to the other. So we're going to make sure that we're, we're looking out for the roadways in Braintree, and we're going to work with National Grid. They have to do this work. They're replacing very old-aged infrastructure as far back as 1941. Some of these pipes were installed. So it's, it's a safe thing to do, and we have, we have discussed this with the staff from National Grid, and they understand what's expected to that, from them, and we're going to approve this permit with those conditions in place. And so just wanted to give that little background as well.
Thank you, Counselor Ryan. So we do have a motion and a second, so I will ask for a roll call vote, please. Clerk Simino.
Counselor Erika.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty.
Aye.
Counselor Hume is not present this evening. Counselor Mackin.
Aye.
Counselor Maglio.
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien.
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds.
Aye.
Counselor Ringus.
Aye.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Eight in favor, one absent.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to 22039, National Grid petition, Standish Avenue, or take up any action relative thereto. Again, I will turn it over to Counselor Ryan, Chairman of the Committee on DPW.
Thank you, Madam President. Earlier this evening, again, we, the Department of Public Works Subcommittee met and unanimously voted to recommend favorable action to the full council on 22039 National Grid petition, Standish Avenue, or take up any action related thereto. And I'm going to read the motion, and it will explain as I go through the motion, to relay approximately 480 feet of 2-inch bare steel from 1926 and 1946, approximately 25 feet of 3-inch plastic from 1979, and approximately 75 feet of 2-inch plastic from 1978, with approximately 580 feet of 2-inch plastic in Standish Avenue from Arbutus Ave to the end of Main at 118 Standish Ave with staff recommendations. Belt has no conflicts with this location. The Department of Public Works has reviewed the subject petition and the accompanying sketch for the gas main replacement on Standish Ave. The work is being proposed as part of a program to eliminate aging gas infrastructure. Standish Ave is not subject to the excavation moratorium, having been last resurfaced by overlay and micro-surfacing in 2012. However, the condition of the roadway pavement is still in good condition, and as such, the DPW recommends that the petition be granted with the following conditions. A temporary patch shall be placed immediately after the work. The street excavation should be saw cut, backfilled, and compacted in 8-inch lifts The street excavation should be sawcut, backfilled, and compacted, and 8-inch lifts paved to match existing asphalt depth with a minimum depth of 4 inches, and 2-inch lifts to match the existing street grade. After maintaining the temporary patch through one winter, a permanent patch shall be placed the following spring. The permanent patch shall be crown-to-curb, mill and overlay with the pavement depth of 1 1/2 inches. DPW also recommends the following requirements be added to the permit. National Grid must arrange a pre-construction meeting with the Department of Public Works for Braintree to discuss the utility corridor assignment. The new gas mains must not encroach on any existing utilities, and then the standard language where they can't close any roadway down. Only Braintree can do that. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Ringus. Council Ryan, did you want to add anything?
Thank you, Madam President. So this street is not under moratorium. We did it over in 2012, but as our diligent DPW staff point out, the street is still in good condition. So we've told National Grid, they can go in and do this work, but they have to put the street back in good condition. So we've told them they need to do crown-to-curb. So that would be the side of the road, the curb, that they're working out to the middle of the road. So we'll take care of all the side of the street where they're doing this work, and it's very reasonable for us to ask them to do this type of repair. And they've agreed to do that, and I want to say good work by the Town Department of Public Works for asking for this works, this type of repair methodology, and they're doing a great job keeping on top of National Grid. And Jim Arson, that's out there, the DPW Director, good job. Jim, thank you.
Thank you, Council Ryan. Clerk Simino, roll call vote, please.
Council Erika?
Yes.
Council Flaherty?
Aye.
Council Hume is not present this evening. Council Mackin?
Aye.
Council Maglio?
Aye.
Council O'Brien?
Aye.
Council Reynolds?
Aye.
Council Ringus?
Aye.
Council Ryan?
Aye.
Eight in favor, one absent.
Thank you very much. All right. We have no new business this evening, so we will move on to our referrals. Councilor Ryan, is there a motion to refer to the following committees?
There's going to be one long motion, Madam President, to refer to the Committee on the Department of Public Works, 22040 Comcast Petition 200 Grossman Drive, or take up any action related thereto. Refer to the Committee on Ways and Means, 22041 Mayor. Mayor Acceptance of Donations, or take up any action related thereto. 22042 Mayor Appointment Director, Human Resources Department, or take up any action related thereto. Refer to the Committee on Community Planning, 04122, Council Maglio, multi-family zoning requirements for MBTA communities, or take up any action related thereto. 04222, Council Maglio, environmental sustainability, or take up any action related thereto. 04322, Council Maglio, bike lanes and traffic, or take up any action related thereto. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Ringus. Clerk Simino, roll call vote, please.
Council Erika?